Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and call our meeting in order. If you could please rise for the place, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the public who wishes to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
If we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment, there are comment cards as you enter both sides of the auditorium. You can complete one and our board assistant will collect those from you if you do desire for public comment. In the meantime, can I get Ms. Downs-Lewis, can you do the roll call, please?
Ms. Grant is absent, excuse. Ms. Lewis, yes, Reverend Mathias?
Here.
Ms. Ross?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
President Ross?
Here again.
There again. You have it left me.
You missed waiting.
Okay, all right. That's probably why you got so much attention.
Thank you.
That's all right, don't worry about it.
May we have a motion to approve the next agenda, please?
To approve the agenda?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Be a none, thank you. And we'll get started with our celebrations this evening. Looks like we have Ms. Chaney to provide some information on the Promise Neighborhoods.
Have a couple people with me if you don't mind.
Absolutely, thank you.
President Ross, Superintendent Dr. Roby, distinguished board members, thank you for having us tonight. I think everybody's ready here. So, we are honored to be here, excited to talk about the Grand Rapids Southeast Promise Neighborhood. And we're being very intentional about calling it Grand Rapids Southeast Promise Neighborhood, or by the acronym, because we know Promise Zone, Promise Neighborhood, they can sometimes seem interchangeable and they're not. So, we're extremely excited to be here to talk about the two-day appreciative summit that we just had this last week. And I'll introduce very quickly, if you'd like, straight to my right, Sherri Ross, Tricia Mathis, and their role with the appreciative summit.
Okay. Greetings, everyone. I am Sherri Ross, and I'm proud to come to you as one of the co-directors of the Promise Neighborhood Grant, specifically one of the directors of the implementation teams in the various areas. So, again, looking forward to this opportunity.
I am Tricia Mathis, and during this two-day summit, I did a lot of facilitating. It was very exciting, if you were there. And I am also a co-director of the Design and Implementation Teams.
So, we've got two days of a lot of learning. As you can see, lots of participants as well. Just over 170 people participated. We were very excited about that. And next, we'll talk about, this is the Ottawa Hills feeder pattern. So, we do have 13 schools that are a part of this, and it feeds all the way from birth to career, so cradle to career. And we have our pre-K 5, pre-K 8, comprehensive middle and comprehensive high school that are a part of this. And a lot of the learning centered around strengths-based or appreciative inquiry, and how we don't need to fix things, but we need to leverage the strengths of what is already there, and making sure that we rise by leveraging the strengths. So, building muscle in certain areas, math, literacy, certainly the partnerships are aimed at helping us with that. So, we're extremely excited about that as well. That slide will be forthcoming. And we have Grand Rapids Southeast Side Principals here tonight that were a part of it. And they were extremely happy about the learning as well as we debriefed. Many things came up about just the amount of depth that was presented and a new way of looking at things, or perhaps it might not be brand-new, but things that we haven't brought to the top before. Thank you to the board members who came, not only to the appreciative summit, but to the reception that we had after. That was very fun, as far as getting the community to know and appreciate what we're after, what we're doing. So, the six branches of the Cradle to Career and Promise Neighborhood Grant initiatives, if the two of you want to speak about that for a quick moment.
So, yes, if you look on the screen, there are six key areas. Academic success, which will eventually be broken down into literacy and math. We have college and career readiness. And then early learning, which is birth to five-years-old. Parent and community engagement, and life success. And then we have also teacher and leader development.
And those are going to be comprised of teams, not only internal, as far as teachers, paraprofessionals, support staff, principals, but also community members as well. So, we took everybody's name who was there. We asked for parent names as well. We had some parents there, a couple parents there. We're looking to build that out even more. But the teams will be comprised of people throughout the community and internally. And so, we can have lots of voices represented, because we know we are one entity. And our kids go into the community when they leave us each and every day. So, how do we make sure that we're partnering very closely with community members? So, we had lots of collaborative roundtables. And then we have our community partners. These are the sub-recipients of the Promise Neighborhood, or Grand Rapids Southeast Promise Neighborhood. So, we're partnering on this initiative together, knowing that we'll also join with other community partners as well, as they lend themselves. So, this is an exhaustive list of the sub-awardees of the grant, but it's not exhaustive as far as the people that we're hoping will join this initiative. And they can help us to leverage our strengths, and we'll be able to leverage theirs as well. So, we're extremely excited about this. It was a great time this last week. Lots of work, but very good time. And anything else that you want to add?
There's room for more voices, for sure, so...
Yeah, come join us.
Yes, please do. And invite any parents as well.
Yes, and thank you so much for your support so far, and continuing forward as well. And thank you for being there, both of you. Appreciate it very much.
If I can add, because I think the ladies are doing a nice job and being very modest. This was a huge lift, and this is a multimillion-dollar federal grant over the next five years. And when you talk about a promised neighborhood, if you, it gets its roots in, probably the most famous one is the Harlem Children's Zone, which is out of New York City. That started about 25 years ago. And it starts with cradle to career, but it's everything in between. It is educating families, providing mental health supports, providing training for families for different opportunities, businesses. And so, in the footprint of the Harlem Children's Zone, they took, I think, 30 square blocks or so, and transformed this whole community, similar to what we are trying to do. And it's a very prestigious award to get, a Promise Neighborhood Grant. They're only offered maybe 10 every 15, every five-year cycle. And so, it's a very competitive grant. I know that Minneapolis received one, as well as St. Paul, and Austin, Texas. And so, this is a really big honor for Grand Rapids and for Grand Rapids Public Schools. But then, what I like about this is that these three have been working very hard, along with our building principals, to make sure that our staff understand what the Promise Neighborhood is, and so that we can build up specifically in the southeast quadrant of our city, 49507. But it has ripple effects. So, just because it's concentrated in one particular area, it has other impacts around daycare and wellness, and having, not having food deserts in certain parts of our community. And so, this is really, really major. And so, again, kudos to you. We look forward to having definitely more parents involved as we learn more about it, but we want to make sure that we provided that information for you. And then also, our plan is to explain the difference between Promise Zone Authority, which is a separate opportunity for scholars, and what a Promise Neighborhood Grant is. And so, because people use the terms interchangeably, and they are two very different programs. But they do both offer promise for our community.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone?
I just have a question. Is there somewhere on the website that parents can be directed to find out more information about this? Are things coming up?
Sure. As we're updating our website, we're getting all of that information to Kaitlyn. We were in the process of getting, you'll see in the corner there, it was on the first slide, our logo together, and making sure that, because we had a Hill seed grant prior to this. And so, as Western Michigan University has kind of closed out that grant, started this one, as the administrators of this, we want to make sure that there's a clean break in that. So, we're feeding that to Kaitlyn as we get it. It's not live yet, but will be. So, I'll make sure you get that.
Awesome, thank you.
Any else? Well, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
That brings us to our public comment for any board agenda items. Don't believe we have any. And I think we can probably safely move to the secretary's report. Ms. Downs-Lewis, if you would.
Yes, the Ed-Hart Facilities Committee will be meeting Wednesday, the 17th, at 4:00 in the auditorium. The Policy Committee meeting will be Wednesday, August 17th, at 5:00 p.m. here, no, it's downstairs in Room 101. And the Finance Committee will be meeting August 22nd at 4:30 in the auditorium.
Thank you. Committee chair updates. Ms. Davis, you have something for academic achievement?
Yes. Academic achievement has two running agenda items. The ESR update and the strategic plan update. Something that stands out that they gave us during the ESR update is that they are working on creating a take-home library that will provide five books for each scholar in our schools every year. So, they are actively working on that, and they are going to get more details in the future for us. Monies from ESR funds are being used to add additional pay for tutors, and specifically, high-dose tutoring for reading for Tier 2 and Tier 3 scholars. With the strategic plan, Themes 1, 3, and 4, which I made note, just since we might not have them memorized. Theme 1 is holistic scholar need. 3 is equitable access and outcomes. And 4 is curriculum and program opportunities. They talked about how these three will be embedded into individual school improvement plans. And we will get more updates throughout the year, as far as that goes. Summer of Success, we were given more details. I know we got a full board presentation on that, but it was five weeks with 1,147 students participated. 602 were also co-enrolled in the Loop Program. And it was focused on ELA, math, and project-based learning. Middle school also had social-emotional learning. High school was focused on credit recovery, with 233 students participating. 25, at the time of our meeting, had graduated, but there was anticipation of more. The teachers that were involved got 26 professional development hours. And those hours were based on project-based learning, which was incorporated into the program. Specific instruction on just the structure of Summer of Success, SEL, ESL, and ELA in math. Lots of ELs. We also received a learning management system update. So, in our district, we have CSOW being used for K-5 students. As of 2020, every, all K-5 students had access to that. And so, we were given some data in regards to the usage of that. 40% to 50% of students are using that each month. So, the district is actively working to get those percentages up. The goal would be to have everybody using the program. Schoology is the LMS, Learning Management System, being used for grades 6 through 12. And this supports not only one-on-one learning, but also group activities. It has self-paced courses. Schoology also manages, the grades are managed in there, which is different from CSOW. There were three surveys given, one to staff, one to students, one to parents. And some of the responses that we, that were shared with us were... In the staff survey, we had 100 responses out of 690 users. And 80% said that it was easy to navigate, easy to use. 60% had specific complaints about a feature or function. And 20% didn't like it, because students and parents have complained that they can't find content. In the student survey, 232 students answered. 95% of them said it was easy to navigate. The parent survey, it was obvious that they're positive about the potential of using this program, but there were, there was negative feedback about the inconsistent use from teachers. So, because of this survey, they're hoping to continue to provide learning modules to help the teachers and the parents, and to troubleshoot specific complaints that maybe teachers had about those specific features or functions. And then, just, they're hoping to grow the success of the program and can more consistent use. That's what I have.
Dr. Flores, then Ms. Lewis.
Just a follow-up question. I was wondering if it was reported out about the 100 students that were third graders that had not met their reading requirements and were in jeopardy of being held back. Was there any information about how many of those we actually engaged with interventions to try to assist these students during the summer?
That was not specifically talked about at this meeting. However, at the end of each meeting, we talk about upcoming topics that, and that was mentioned as one of our upcoming topics. So, it is something that we will definitely delve into in the fall.
So, we'll have a report on the outcome or the interventions and where those students are? I mean, they are heavy on my mind.
I will make sure we address it.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
I have two questions. First of all, the kids who are going to get the books, five books, is that K-5? Or what does that cover?
Everyone.
What grade does that cover?
I believe it's all of them.
Yep. And so, the focus around that is literacy, obviously, is a fundamental skill. And our idea is that at the, for the next five years, if every child in our district had five books that they can take, they select and take home as part of their library, to build their library within their home, that they'll have a range of books over a couple of years. And if they have siblings that are at different grade levels, then that's even more books that are within the home. And so, our goal is to have five books per child all the way through. So, it would be by interest, and certainly developmentally appropriate by grade span.
We were also told that they would be looking at their reading level and suggesting books that are appropriate for them.
One other question about Schoology.
I remember at one point, when we first started using this, we had some sort of class for parents, I think at Parent University. And I'm wondering if there's any plan, maybe, to do that again, that some of these people who fell through the cracks might...
Sure. Mr. Atkins? That'll be something that's on your to-do. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, go ahead, Dr. Baker.
Yeah, just I think that Dr. Flores' point about the third grade reading, I think that we could have, could we just have an update on that instead of waiting for a fall academic achievement committee meeting?
We can ask our assessment team to pull some information, and we'll provide that.
Dr. Roby, just a quick follow-up to that as well. Can we get the information on the number of students that comply with the waiver requirements as well? And that information? The waiver?
So, I want to make sure I'm understanding the request.
Sounds like we want an overall update on those 100 students. You know, what interventions were offered to those 100 students? How many took advantage of those interventions? And how many, as a result, either were retained or requested a waiver?
Got it.
Anything else from Ms. Davis? Thank you, Ms. Davis. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
All right. I'm going to invite Ms. Bridget Chaney and also Ms. Stephanie Andrews forward to give an... Andrews? To give a report from the Grand Rapids Foundation.
Good evening. Superintendent President Ross, everyone else, thank you so much for being here tonight. I'm excited to share, because I haven't been back in front of you guys for a little while. So, I do want to give you a quick update on what we're doing with the budget. We have committed to 700, a minimum amount of $750,000 that we're going to be fundraising this year, just for the basic programs that we've covered in the past. We are also committed to the two capital campaigns for both Union and Ottawa Hills High Schools, for the sports, building champion sports program. So, those are both well over $3 million that you guys have approved at this level. So, we have our work cut out for us, but we're very excited. We have been very busy. The other work that I want to kind of update you on is the Board of Directors for the Foundation is really, really wanting us to take a deeper dive into our mission, vision, values, and really our strategy of how we're doing the work, and how we're making sure that we are showing up as an equitable partner with not only the school system, but in the community as a whole, and making sure that how we fundraise really meets the needs of our community, family, and scholars for the district. So, I'm really excited that not only are we doing this refresh, but we have really talked about how do we align with the strategy that GRPS, you guys have done such amazing work, there's no reason for us to go out and basically redo the great work that you guys have already done, but really, how do we come alongside and complement that work? So, that is being worked on right now. And we will have an update by our October 18th Foundation for the Future fundraising event. To date, we've raised well over $40,000 for Turkey Trot, which is really exciting, because we still do, thank goodness, have a few months until Thanksgiving. I'm going to enjoy the summer weather for a few more months, hopefully. We've also secured an opportunity to sell some Union High School gear, to use that towards fundraising for our capital campaign. And we'll be selling that at Bridge Street Market. So, I secured that this morning. So, I'm very excited to do that. And we're going to be talking to a lot of the other Westside businesses to do something similar. We'll be doing a similar campaign when the Ottawa Hills Capital Campaign goes public. But for now, it's just the Union side. So, just in case people ask questions, that's why. And the final thing that I want to share is that we will be hosting the Alumni Classic Tailgate Party. So, we're very excited to be hosting that and putting all the pieces and parts together with three other community partners from 9:30 to 11:30. So, come by.
Very excited about the Alumni Classic.
Dr. Baker?
Yeah, two questions. One is, were you raising money for GRPS today by playing golf?
I was. I actually was selling World's Finest chocolates for $20 apiece. All funds go to GRPS. President Ross was also there and attended, so I can attest to that.
So, I'm glad that people are sacrificing by playing golf and eating chocolate.
I was not golfing. I was not golfing. I was just talking about our mission.
And then, secondly, am I correct? Maybe this isn't your question, maybe this is Mr. Johnson's. But did we move the start of the Turkey Trot to 7:00 a.m.?
Oh, I am not the race director. Let's ask it.
Okay, no. Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of, might be the year I miss.
Any other questions for Ms. Chaney or Ms. Andrews? Thank you very much for your hard work, Ms. Andrews. Appreciate you greatly. Thank you. An update on the strategic plan?
All right. So, what you have in front of you is the draft of the Strategic Plan, Facilities Master Plan Town Hall schedule. And as you recall, part of our work is to reintroduce the strategic plan, so that people understand what tenant of the master plan, the facilities master plan, this kind of falls into. And we've talked about creating a culture of collaboration, stewardship, and trust, cultivating and engage in impactful, more diverse workforce, ensuring equitable access and outcomes, optimizing all schools as valuable options. And so, my goal, our goal of our team is to reintroduce the strategic plan to our school communities. We have an introductory video that will go to staff on tomorrow afternoon, as well as a FAQ around the Facilities Master Plan, so if people have some general questions. And then, what you will see also is a QR code that's not actually live yet, but it should be live by the end of the week. And so, as we are announcing times for people to participate in this conversation, they'll get more information. And they'll also have a website where it's a dropdown on our district website to gather more information. So, again, the Facilities Master Plan is directly correlated to our 22 through 27 strategic plan. And it's a guide of how we're making our decisions to help our community as promised. Our leaders will be seeking input from the community in deciding on what should happen with buildings. And scholar families will be involved in that process. I know that there's an action item later on in the agenda where President Ross will walk through the facilitator-stakeholder engagement plan with a little bit more detail. But I just wanted to give that high-level overview. We've already been talking about the different audiences that we want to ensure that we do invite. And then, even with our town halls, we have a couple of virtual options. So, for those who work evening or second shift, there's an opportunity for them to participate. And we'll be across the city between September 13th through October 12th of this fall. And that is my quick update related to that. Questions that I can answer?
Yes, that being done. Thank you very much. So, as Dr. Roby mentioned, we do have the one-action item, which is the approval of the stakeholder engagement plan for the Facilities Master Plan. And there was information in your packet. And in that, in your packet, you will see the clear goals for the engagement. And again, that's based on the International Association for Public Participation Spectrum. So, we are looking to inform stakeholders about the strategic, just, excuse me, the strategic plan and the Facilities Master Plan process, consult with stakeholders on the proposed options for the plan, and involve stakeholders in shaping Phase 2 engagement after we actually do approve the Facilities Master Plan. So, just to kind of walk through some of that intentionality, Dr. Roby has already gotten us started with recording two video messages that the district is using to share highlights about the strategic plan and next steps for the district. Included in, as she mentioned, we're going to have several town hall meetings, 11 total. Two of those will be virtual. Two of those will be presented in both Spanish and English. And all of them will have interpreters for Spanish, Swahili, and Kiribati. So, we're definitely trying to do our best to make sure that everyone in our community is able to be involved directly in these town hall conversations. Aside from the town halls, we also will be engaging with our scholars. We're going to divide those engagement opportunities amongst elementary, middle, and high school levels. And, you know, we're also, of course, going to be taking advantage of the superintendent's advisory council, various student councils, athletic teams, our art classes, and whatever other creative ways that our administration, maybe our board, our building leaders devise to get scholar voice in that. Thirdly, we're going to engage with the parents, of course. Thirdly, we're going to engage with the parents, of course. This is just a starting point at this point. We'll probably lean heavily on our pals, our parent action leaders, to get suggestions on what the best way to consult with parents. And we're going to really be intentional about including our parents and engaging families in these conversations. And you see the tentative timeline on that in your packet as well. And then when we talk about external stakeholder engagement methods, I'm going to leverage several lunch and learn, community conversations. We're going to engage with our community partners, our stakeholder groups, similar to what we did with the strategic plan, and try to have our community partners leverage their individual networks to, to really bring folks to the table to, to help us learn more about what the community would like to see or again, inform, consult, and get their, their input. Aside from that, our broader community engagement. And again, when I say broader, that's not necessarily our organized community partners, but just residents in the community, voters, other just community leaders that we're looking to engage with, with a comprehensive campaign that demonstrate the value of how our master plan can improve neighborhoods regardless whether someone has a child in the district. Again, a healthier schools means a healthier community. Obviously, a healthy community is better for the entire city. So and then lastly, of course, engaging with us as a board. You see several opportunities in there from a conversation, from a combination of the Ahaq Facilities Group, our Facilities Master Plan Work Group. You see, we do have a fall retreat scheduled for October 25th where we will spend a lot of time delving deeply into this and compiling all feedback to prepare us for a final vote for our Facilities Master Plan, hopefully as early as November 21st. But we do have a backup date of November 5th. So the goal is to bring this to a close this calendar year so we can then move proactively in 2023 on next steps to implement the Facilities Master Plan. So again, that's just an overview of what we have from an engagement perspective. I don't know if anyone may have any questions or anything I can maybe speak more about?
Very thorough.
My wife's in the audience, so.
If I can just add that with this process, and again, we want to make sure that it's clear this is the beginning steps and similar to what we have done with other planning. If we need to do more, we are willing to do more. But we want to at least have some dates on the calendar of where we know we want to have some starting points. And again, it is trying to be very intentional to gather a broad swath of voices and perspectives as we make this decision together as a community and to ensure that people understand the why. And that, to me, is the, one of the foundational things that we need to do is understanding the why and to make sure that we continue to go out into the community so that people know there won't, there aren't surprises and they're not feeling as if their voices have not been considered.
Thank you. Well, if there are no questions, may I have a motion to approve the stakeholder engagement plan for Facilities Master Plan?
No mood.
Mrs. Lewis, yes? Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes.
And finally, may I have a motion to approve the Stevens-Cosin Agenda grouping?
Motion for approval. Port.
Ms. Lewis, yes? Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes.
Great. And that brings us to public comment and energy items. I believe we only have one. That's from Ms. Mary Bowens. If you would like to come forward, Ms. Mary Bowens. Thank you.
Good evening. President Ross, Superintendent Roby, and board members. I'm here tonight to say farewell. August 31st is my last day of work for Grand Rapids Public Schools and September will be the first day of my retirement. I started in Grand Rapids Public Schools as a para for a summer school in 1970 with the Shawnee Park Oral-Deaf Program while I was in high school. I spent most of my career working with severely emotionally impaired students at Kent Education Centers. I was also a homebound teacher for 10 years and I have been the GREA president for the last eight. The legacy of my family goes back to 1950 when my parents came to Grand Rapids from Wisconsin to teach. I was told it was because the pay was better in Michigan than it, than it was in Wisconsin. I also remember that my mom, being a special ed teacher, had a different pay scale than my father did as a, as a gen ed teacher. We don't know what happened to that. My mother taught in the Oral-Deaf Program at Sigsbee and then at Shawnee Park until her retirement. She also participated in a film created to highlight the Oral-Deaf Program in Grand Rapids. Family legend has it that my father was one of the first male elementary teachers in Grand Rapids Public Schools, starting at Burton Elementary. He then taught science at South High School. While he was there, he had a state championship basketball team. He then transferred to Central when South High School closed in 1968. And he also served as the GREA president in the '70s. My husband was also a 30-year educator in Grand Rapids working with the young adult students at Kent Education Center. And he also served as Vice President of Grayson. The four of us have more than 120 years invested in Grand Rapids Public Schools. I've enjoyed all my roles that I've had in Grand Rapids Public Schools. The caliber of staff that I have worked with are second to none. They bring many and varied gifts to the students of Grand Rapids. I've appreciated the fact that I could represent the members of GREA for the last eight years. It has been an honor and a privilege to work on their behalf, to advocate for improving working and learning conditions for everyone in Grand Rapids Public Schools. I've also appreciated the ability to have open conversations with board members and the administration. Working together, being heard, and having some impact on the school district has been very rewarding. You will soon be seeing a tentative agreement for a new contract that was completed last week. We need to work with our members to get ratification before it's presented to you. I'm proud of the bargaining team that worked on this, put this together. We approached this bargain with the hope of improving the ability for GRPS to recruit and retain new staff by having a competitive contract. You can look forward to seeing Matt Marlowe, our new GREA president, in the future at the board meetings.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Superintendent's comment?
So again, congratulations, Mary. I have not worked with you long, but I have appreciated just the collegiality and the time that we've been able to brainstorm different ideas. So best luck to you and enjoy retirement. I hope that you do. August 23rd is the first day of school and we are excited, excited, excited for our young people to come busting through those doors. And just a reminder to everyone, as young people are excited to return to school, please, 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 from a safety perspective, be watching for those buses and young people who sometimes dart out and don't always look both ways. That's always that reminder. And I know that Chief Johnson will also do a kind of safety announcement to remind our families of that and our community of that because we want to make sure that people come to school safely and return home safely. Board members, you will get an invitation to do some first-day visits if you haven't done so already. And so I ask that you select the schools that fit into your schedule and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Board member comments? Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I know we're not supposed to respond to public comment, but Mary, it's just listening to your family's story and adding it up is, I mean, I think I knew those stories, but it was really, it's pretty remarkable the commitment that you and your family have had to this district and to special education also. And I just, you know, I mean, I've, I've watched your leadership and advocacy and, and I have very much appreciated your friendship to myself. And I've always hoped that, you know, my actions as a board member were respected by you personally. And so I just really have appreciated your, your role there. It's very important. And so, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
I just really appreciate Dr. Roby's comments and Dr. Baker's comments. And I just want to wish all of our teachers and parapros and principals and everybody good luck with the beginning of school. Kids and parents, it's an exciting time and it's a busy time. So just know that you are on our minds and we just wish for the best for all of you.
Dr. Roby?
Just excited with all of the new things that are happening and, and the successes that we're having engaging community and certainly the promise that, that we have with new federal funding and projects. And hate to see you go, Mary. I object. We have a lot of history and, and you've done a great job. Thank you for your service.
Ms. Shaki?
Yeah, as a parent, I just want to express my gratitude for the new website. I have been navigating it to find resources like what sports my now sixth-grade son gets to participate in and when in the world was that open house? And, and it has been so easy and effortless. And so just my gratitude to the communications team, Javi and Caitlin, who I know really poured their heart and souls into that work. It is working and I see the difference. So just a lot of gratitude for the team, to the team for that. And, and Mary, my gratitude to you as well. Just, it's obvious your dedication to the staff and to making GRPS better. And thank you so much for your work in making us better.
Ms. Williams?
Well, again, congratulations on retirement, Mary. I hope you have a wonderful time. Don't look back. We got work for you to do if you decide to though. And then, and I just want to say thank you to all the staff and parents and family and youth who have made GRPS their choice for the next upcoming school year.
Thank you. Reverend Matthias?
Yeah, Mary, that was a little bit surprising. It has been a pleasure really working both with the teachers and you and wanting to see, you know, fair contracts and recruitment, certainly retaining. And so really appreciate the work and certainly your, your family's legacy here. I, I could only imagine how many thousands of, of our kids your family has affected and, and could look back in their careers and so forth. So I really appreciate that. Really exciting to looking forward to the new school year. I think that I hope, especially as we're coming out of COVID and, and some of these changes, restrictions that are, that are, that have changed, that there is an excitement about being in person, in school, seeing one another, and especially working hard to, to gain in our, in our, both our students and certainly parents and teachers. So I really appreciate the hard work that the administration is doing, some of the transparency that we're seeing too, changes in administration that are going on that I think are going to be positive for our district. So I really appreciate the, the hard work that's there and certainly our, our board members that really have been looking to see this urban district really shine. So I really appreciate that work as well. Thank you.
Ms. Downs-Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to say good luck to all the teachers and kids who are starting school next week. And I'd also like to thank you, Mary. And I thank you not only for your work in the classroom, but your work as somebody in the Education Association because I've been both in the classroom and a member of the Education Association. And I know both of them are difficult, but sometimes I think being a person in the Education Association might have been more difficult than being in the classroom. So thank you for everything. Thank you for everything.
Right. And I guess really just another thanks for everyone who's done the heavy lifting as we get prepared for the school year, the building leaders, teachers, administrative folks, Ms. Andrews, and just everyone really.